Two, three minutes, please state your name and address.
I'm Karen R. Johansmeyer, 16 Penny Corner Road, Portland, Connecticut. Should I go over there?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. I'm Karen R. Johansmeyer, 16 Penny Corner Road, Portland, Connecticut. And I'm also part of the East Hampton community as well in the East Hampton 3rd Connecticut Regiment of Five Syndromes. And I'm grateful for what you just did before the portion of the meeting began. Because that's exactly what I was going to ask for a moment of silence for nine eleven. I thank you all for doing that. And I hope we can grow as a nation going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anyone out there? We have anyone in the audience that would just... Okay, never know when we'll close that portion of the meeting. Presentation. Motivation update on the start of the 2021 school year.
Evening, I send apologies on behalf of Mr. Christopher Goff, who could not be here this evening. But we have our vice chair from the board, Mrs. Nancy Oakley. I'm certainly willing to entertain any questions that you may have. I put some information in your packet. I know you have a very busy agenda, so I don't want to take up too much time. But I gave you our reopening and renewing plans. I can give you the highlights from those in that. What we did this year was we tried to create as normal a school year as possible for our students. We've given the teachers a little bit more flexibility as to how they set up their rooms. We are offering along with the CIAC expectations, a full slate of athletic practices and contests. We've pulled back some of the restrictions on band and chorus and theater classes, but still are within lines for the DPH. So I'm trying to use the term this year, a normal school year with masks. Obviously, through the executive order that ends on September 30th, but could likely be extended. It does call for masks in schools, so all of our students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, are in masks. But other than that, we are trying to create as normal a school year as possible. And let me just give you the best example. Middle school, last year, we're in cohorts, they were in the same class all day long, the teachers went to them. But we've kind of allowed the middle school students now to travel from room to room, they're using their lockers. We didn't, you know, when we began last year and we were planning, we weren't sure what school was going to look like, what the transmission rate in schools were going to be. So based on the knowledge that we have, that there's very little in-school transmission, we've tried to create a much more normal school year for our students. I will tell you, based on the statistics, 71% of our students ages 12 to 17 have received at least one vaccination. And over 60% are fully vaccinated, which means that when we have a case at the middle school or high school, there's a lot less students who are being quarantined. Which is, which is great. We're happy to, you know, to not interrupt classes, not interrupt their participation in sports. So especially for the middle and high school, it's starting to feel like a normal school year. Every staff member who, and we've had three who have been positive, have been unvaccinated. So we're not seeing any breakthrough cases, any of the students at the middle school or high school who have been positive in the last couple of weeks are also unvaccinated. So, you know, my advice is, you know, for those that want to get vaccinated, the opportunity is there. We've been holding vaccination clinics at the high school and will continue to do that as long as there is interest. You may be aware of Executive Order 13G, which requires our staff, all employees of the school, including coaches, any contractors to be vaccinated as of September 27th. So we're in the process of collecting information from our 365 employees, making sure that we have their vaccination information or the exemptions that allow them to be tested weekly. We've developed a process for collecting weekly tests. So at this point, I'm not going to say anything else, I'm going to let you ask any questions that you might have. Yes, sir.
Paul, what percentage of our students have not returned to the classrooms?
So there was really not an option for remote learning this year. So last year, they had the opportunity to do remote learning. Some families, in addition to remote learning, we had about, at the end of the school year, just over 100 students who were remote learning. And we had about 48 students that chose homeschooling. So there is no remote learning option. But we still have some students who are not our traditional homeschoolers that are doing homeschooling. So it's about 38 students that are doing homeschooling. We figure at some point, they will, they will return.
Well, what about the buses? I see a lot of towns have problems with bus runs.
Knock on wood right now, we have been, we have been very, very fortunate with our, with our buses. What we did do, based on the number of drivers that were available, we did reduce our buses by one over the summer. It wasn't ideal, but we have one less bus running. And our Secretary of Transportation, I know Mr. Wright knows her well, Linda Miner, who is oversees transportation along with Karen Acera. She has been doing a couple morning bus runs, she's licensed to drive a bus, so we have a, we have a substitute bus driver in her. But we have been very fortunate at this point. Daco has enough resources to provide substitute drivers for us, and I think at this point, we're okay.
What is vaccine mandate, Paul?
Yeah.
What if the lawsuits start to come? Because this is quite an unconstitutional law. Who is going to defend them? Is it Tommy Stamping going to have to pony money up because we took the stance and follow the governor's, what I consider an illegal order? How will that work out? How will that pan out? How much you think that might cost us?
I, you know, Mark, I don't think we're going to be the test case, to be perfectly honest. At this point of our 365 employees, I would assume that about 25 to 30 will choose the weekly testing option. There is a few that may decide to seek employment in another industry of that 25 to 30 who don't want to do the testing. But all of their unions support the testing. So the union leaders in the state and in the area are not coming to me saying, this is, this is ridiculous. They've all jumped on board on that, on that testing slash vaccination option. So I'm not sure that we're going to see it. I don't see a, a strong push from the education unions. There are a couple of state unions that are pushing back on it because it's all state workers as well. So I think that's where you'll see the initial, the initial pushback as of September 27th.
I'm curious, I'm relatively sure they're going to start. I'm just curious. I'm just sure, well, I've got a mask, that's a little difficult to speak.
That's why we have to wear a mask.
No doubt about it, Mr. Mark. I just have a feeling they are going to start. I see it starting across the country, and it's just a matter of time before they hit Connecticut. It just bothers me when I see things that we shouldn't be mandating happen. And I sit here kind of helpless in doing so.
Sure, and you know, Mark, it was, it was a surprise to us that schools were included. You know, we had kind of been hearing the news, it was August 29th or in that area, that, you know, the governor was going to announce that state workers were going to be required to be vaccinated. And then two hours before that press conference, all the superintendents got a call to attend a quick Zoom, and we were informed that school employees were going to be included in that as well. So I only found out about two hours ahead of the news that it was going to be school employees. And, you know, to, you know, to work with our staff and say, okay, you've got now basically four weeks before you have to be vaccinated or be ready for, for weekly testing. Depending on the nature of their insurance, you know, the testing may not be free. There are some free testing sites, but due to the number of students now that with the Delta variant, there's a lot of families that are having testing of their students done. So I know back in May and June, it was very easy to get a testing appointment and get the results in 24 hours, that is no longer the case. So I, I think it becomes a major inconvenience for those that, that don't want to be vaccinated. And, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we're put in the spot now of, you know, going to employees and saying on September 27th, I don't have your test results, you cannot be in this, in this building.
You've got 20, let's use the number that you're up there, 25, 25 teachers leave their positions.
Yeah, likely will not be teachers. Most of the teachers, you know, are, are in deep as far as salary and pension. I, what I anticipate is some of our part-time paraeducators and some of our interventionists that, that are, you know, not part of our insurance. And that's where I anticipate they had to be.
So you don't anticipate losing any teachers?
I don't at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Paul, on weekly testing. On the weekly testing.
Job gets lost.
Is that the responsibility of an employee?
Yes.
And obviously, that has to be done off-site.
Yes, so it's on their own time, at their own cost.
So they're going to make an appointment, I'm just making up, like at CBS every week?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. So even the state, there is some, we can participate in what they're calling pool testing of individuals in schools. But the state has informed us it will not cover adults, it will only cover students. So yeah, the vaccine mandate, the testing option really is a, it's not an easy option for people, right?
We have any questions, Paul?
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Clean Energy Task Force presentation on a lecture car show.
What do you want to do? Thank you, town council members. Thank you, town manager. The East Hampton and Portland Clean Energy Task Forces are mounting or putting on an electric car show this year. It's an annual show, but of course, last year did not happen. Let's say a little more about that. I hope you have seen these around town.
Yes, we have.
And I hope you're thinking about it, not only observing it, because that's one of the reasons we're here tonight. This is an event that will be happening a week from this Saturday, it'll be happening the 25th. It is scheduled at the high school from 12 to 3:00. And we are doing this show for several reasons. But here, we're going to be showcasing electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles. The point is to reduce obstacles, answer questions, remove some of the mysticism or some of the concerns people have. Obviously, you're getting a dedicated group of people who are, who believe very much in the electrification of transportation. We have seven dealerships that have signed up to be part of the show. We have 15 vehicle owners who have pre-registered. Vehicle owners can come to the show and they're welcome, and we really want them to be there. We have two renewable energy vendors, or companies, I should say, that are also going to be represented at the show. And we are part of a national effort. It's a National Drive Electric Week campaign. If you were to go to the national website, East Hampton, Connecticut is present. Probably one of the only two events in the state of Connecticut, and one of them is here. Senator Norm Needleman will be at our event. I want to take a moment because there are a number of people who have been working very hard to make this a success. Town manager Dave Cox and his able staff, Kathy Saroy, invaluable people in this effort. Katrina Alagata from town here. In Park and Rec, which is also helping make the event a success. They're working with us, they're helping publicize and register people. Jeremy Hall, Sean Mullen. The high school principal, Eric Werner. We asked, he immediately said, absolutely. He was on board. In Portland, their Clean Energy Task Force, their chairman Andy Bauer, valuable assistance. And I even want to say that the town of Marlborough has provided us a very large space on their town kiosk, right near, right on their town green, to promote this show. And if you go there, you will see our signage up there as well. All kind of with the same theme. You see a sign like this, that's our event. Lastly, I want to say that we have a very able task force, people working very hard. My associate, Paul Wizniewski. Our, our chairperson is Kai Artematis. Marty Podcash, Lori Belanger, working very hard every day to make this a success. I understand, one of our volunteers, Darren Aloya, I hope I have his pronunciation right. He's volunteering on his time, but I believe he's before the town council for consideration for membership on the committee. We strongly support his participation as an official member of our group, if that's possible. The last comments I'd like to make are, you know, why for us is it important? I would hope it's important, as I look around the room or as I, as people tune in to the event. Obviously, replacing fossil fuels, reducing the greenhouse gases. And quite frankly, this is where, we believe, this is where transportation is going. It's going to electrification. And this puts East Hampton kind of in the forefront. As I said, it's a national event, probably one of only two towns in the state of Connecticut that are getting that kind of recognition. And I think that's great. We're, we're residents in town, and we want to see good things for East Hampton. What I'm asking the town council is, we would like your support, we'd love you to show up for our event. I think that's important. And if you have an electric or a hybrid vehicle, that would be even better. We would love to have you and your vehicle showcased at our event. And lastly, I will just say that we will also be following the CDC guidelines concerning COVID-19. Every participant in the show, not visitors to the show, but participants in the show are being advised and sent copies of the latest CDC guidelines and asked to be in compliance. It is an outdoor event, but there are still some precautions and actions to be taken, and we expect people to be supportive of that effort. That's it from our perspective. Any questions for the council? I would be happy to answer.
Just, just, the parking, I assume, is going to be all in a lot and not on the field or the track, I assume?
Just makes a good point. The event is being conducted in the front of a high school, in the parking lot. It's well-staffed so that we don't have any issues with traffic or concerns about movement of people or vehicles. We've done some pretty good, careful segregation of the vehicle traffic and the pedestrian traffic. And we, we should have that fairly well covered, but we will have been in no proximity to the athletic fields or anything of that nature, or even really the school building itself. We will be in the parking lot of the facility.
Thank you. Have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As I'll see the PowerPoint. Okay, I'm now also fellow works director for record. So I'm here tonight to talk about the Long Range Capital Improvement Plan that I have put together in conjunction with data engineering for our conference. As we go along, I kind of mean this as a discussion, if you guys have questions or about a particular road or about the process, please just jump in and interrupt me. I'll do my best to answer it. It's kind of a lot to digest first of all. So to start off, basically, this is a slide shows a road profile of the town. The survey was focused on the town-owned roads, which is approximately 84 miles of roads that the town maintains. As you say, you can see we have eight miles of brown road, four miles of private roads, and 22 miles of state roads in town. So in the spring of 2020, we enlisted data engineering to go and do a pavement survey of the entire town. The way they did this was utilizing a GIS, GPS, and photometric program, which basically drove every single paved mile in town and took pictures every 10 feet. So one of the great byproducts of this is I now have access to pictures of every 10 feet of the entire town's road network, which is very helpful. You know, as Dave and I are talking about things, we'll go back and, you know, we can call this up off of GIS. So we collected all this data and put it into a program, which basically analyzes the photographs for problems with the asphalt, elevator cracking, riding, all the different kind of pavement distresses that are out there. And if you go to the next slide, or actually, that's why I do, it kind of assigns a value to the road from 0 to 100. 100 being the best, 0 being the worst. So once you have that data, you, basically, the program kind of spits out a list of roads that fall into different categories. It puts them in GIS so we can see them. And then we go ahead and we assign based on numbers that I come up with and give to data for different types of construction, different treatments. It assigns values to how we should attack it and kind of come up with a plan. As you can see in this, this slide here, it shows that, you know, you have from 80 to 100 arbiters that are in good condition and minimal improvement maintenance are done. Fair is preventative maintenance or minor rehabilitation, and then below 50 is poor, which those are the most expensive roads to fix. You know, when you're talking reclaiming, reconstruction, or other things that you can come up with to try and cut the cost. Go to the next slide there. So based on all that data being analyzed, based on the input costs that I gave them, it kind of comes up with a scenario. And it's an overall network rating of the entire town, which is a 70.5 out of 100, which is considering where we're at. And it also gives you the length of miles for each category. You know, in the beginning, you have 2.3 miles of roads, according to the software, that has to be completely rehabilitated. The most prevalent one that we have in town is the 31 miles of minor rehabilitation. So when you look at that, you're talking your known overlay, your shim and chip seal. Those, those type of operations, overlays, sometimes we'll do an overlay. And then next down is the preventative maintenance, which is your crack filling. Quite a bit of that. I'm looking at some other treatments such as micro-surfacing. Just to kind of utilize all the things that are out there to save our infrastructures before it falls into that category where it gets really expensive to start facing.
I'm a maintenance man, sure. So it's more than several years ago, seeing these guys come into town, there's basically heaters in the back of the trucks, they kind of heated the asphalt up, and I was like, doing great there. Never heard anything since.
Yeah.
Apparently, that wasn't the best way to go, that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, I know, standing at it, that's the hot-in-place reclamation, and basically, they superheat the asphalt, you know, we probably saw flames coming out of the top. And what they've found in the past is that it can make the asphalt brittle, and it just doesn't have the surface like. And then on top of that, you still have to put a layer of asphalt on top of it to seal it. So I haven't seen a lot of contractors doing that around anymore. What's kind of become more prevalent is the cold-in-place recycling. I've looked at actually a few towns that have done it, still not sold, I'm always a skeptic, right? I like to stay in with the tried and true until I see it work and I see a test where I can see that it stood up, hasn't started cracking or falling apart. So that's kind of how I wait, how I decide what. And then the routine, we talked about that, the crack filling, epoxy, and those types of things. So if you, this slide here, you may remember from the initial presentation you did when we kind of brought this to you guys. So you've seen this before, this kind of lays out, looking at the road network and looking at the different repair categories we have in the miles per road. You, where will that 70 number end up, you know, based on how much money we throw at it? So if you look at the, you know, the bottom line is the 300,000, which is essentially what we're doing now, because there's always some of that money I have to put into drainage and things like that, just because you don't want to pave a road that needs other things, you don't paint it black, right? We always go through and we fix it, at least, that's why I don't. You know, next up, you'd see the 500,000, and you can see that as you throw more money on it, your road rating increases. And then with that 650,000 number kind of being the status quo, where you can maintain everything you have, you know, at least somewhere 7170 number. But again, that doesn't take into account, you know, if oil goes through the roof or things like that, it changes. So this, this slide with this graph is actually what I find interesting. It shows that when you look, you can see the, the yellow is our 350 scenario. That's what we're doing now, and you can see how it just continued down. We're not throwing it up to keep up with it, and the roads fall further to disrepair. What was presented to the Capitol Committee back last budget season, right, David? And what went through the budget was this plan to at least slowly increase how much we're putting in there. So it's, we're not going right to the 650 in full throttle, but, you know, I think it's this fiscal, I mean, this fiscal year coming up, that we throw another 100,000. And then it's another 100,000 to file to get to that 650. And it's interesting that you can see that, that red line, it starts to tip up at that 2025 fiscal year, where we're starting to bring it back up to the, to the 70 road network. And it's, it's interesting, when you look at the, I'm a geeky engineer, so forgive me, when you look at the, you know, the linear graphs going up, they're offset from each other. So that shows that we are on the same path, because if you take in that 650 and apply it back when we first started, we'd be up at that blue line. So now we're just offset because we started a little bit later. So I don't know if that explains our exit more complicated, but.
While we're on funding.
Sure.
Several years ago, I can't remember exactly when, I believe it was a $5 million bond we did, we threw at the roads. I assumed the money's depleted out of that, I would assume, I'm so good, and I don't like to do that to my last for a day.
Not completed, you mean spent?
Correct.
Yes.
And where are we as far as the payback of that? What's, where are we in?
I wish I had my budget here because that's in there, the materials that we put in about budgeting or about the bonding. So I don't really answer to that. With our record and show.
So then one of my questions would be, if we took another $5 million of the binding, that would obviously offset that curve by a huge amount, I think, almost 50%.
Sure.
It would make a difference. And then you might have to throw 100 extra in here. And then you might have to throw a hundred extra into your actual budget. Fifty this year.
Yeah, and the thing, the temptation with that is in a lot of towns, like you throw all this money in, but then you don't throw the maintenance money. Right? And you say, all right, we've, you know, dumped ten million dollars in and we're good for the next twenty years. And unless you continue to maintain, you know, the asphalt with, you know, cracked pedals and, you know, occasional chip seals.
Well, I, I didn't take.
Oh, yeah.
A total reduction out of your money.
No, 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 they're just saying like in the long term, like that's something people might, you still gotta. Maintain that and then all the, you know, asphalt is such a variable factor.
The other thing is, I'll jump right into this right now, we just had a meeting, subcommittee with members of the sewer commission, we're finding all the good news about the lines that we're gonna be having. Place there. And one of my questions was, one of the members, because he's not staffing, really didn't have the answer. I hope you guys are working together so that you don't pave white birch and tomorrow, you know, today and then tomorrow we come to rip it up for sewers. I'm assuming, but I'd rather throw it out there and just ask the question.
No, definitely, and, and you're absolutely right, you know, and I, I coordinated with the gas company and I asked them, hey, do you have any kind of expansion going on? Like, I mean, you really, it's, it's hard to equate for, you know, people putting services. There's no planning really for that, but when you're doing major expansions or even, you know, if we're talking about the water, you know. You don't want to go ripping up a brand new road, it's painful and, you know. But if you do have to do it, the right way to do it is you come back into Illinois, you don't leave it like Edward Street. You know, which that was the problem and that should have been. I mean, you avoid those and, and that's where the planning comes in and we're having this, you can plan and say, look, hey, I'm gonna do this road out. You know, three years from now, do you have anything going on there? And that goes for all utilities.
Thank you.
Yep. So if you move on to this, it shows an overall map of the whole town. And so once I have all this data, I basically. The program also spits out with a cost benefit analysis. And basically it says, hey, you know, it, it ranks all the roads in town and it says. For this cause, you're gonna get the highest benefit. So I use that as a starting point. You can't, you know, if I just said I'm gonna pick off this list and jump all around town, it just, it would not make sense and people would question what it's doing. So I use that as a starting point and then I develop projects from there, you know, so. I'll take this road that's on the cost benefit, it's high, I know it needs to get done. And then I'll look at the treatment, I'll say, okay, what roads are nearby that also need that treatment? You know, to try and save money, save the contractor, get it done quicker. And you develop projects. And you try and, you know, as much as you can do all the roads in that area based on that. So as, as you look through this map, you can see that, you know, I've tried to, you know, do roads in the area in the same fiscal year with the same kind of treatment. If it makes sense. So then we just kind of get into the list of what are proposed. Oh, I, oh, sorry, Cory.
When I was looking at your map, a very colorful map here.
Yes.
I couldn't help but notice two neighborhoods that are relatively new, they actually are on your map.
Yes, so.
Whispering Woods and Comstock. Those houses were built maybe fifteen years ago, if roads are not very old.
Correct.
Is it safe to say that we've learned now what not to accept? Or road? Because this is absolutely ridiculous.
So.
That we are doing this so soon. When we have other roads that also are in need of repair. And I would love to be able, and you might not be able tonight, but I would love to be able to know why. We got into this predicament, because I don't think we should be in that predicament.
I agree with you, but one thing that may be misleading is this is showing all the different things I'm doing. So if you look at Seven Hills, for instance, that's where I'm potentially out in twenty twenty-five, I'm gonna do a micro-surface, which is a preservation technique. It's not repaving. It's to save all those roads from falling below the curve or have to do a millin' over like, because if, if you're familiar with that, the roads are huge. They're so wide and it would be astronomical to have to go in there and know and all the videos. So by putting a little money upfront and saving them, I think you're saving yourself down, down the road. So that could be a little misleading as you're looking at this, it shows all the different treatments, it's just based on fiscal year. So you're gonna see there's a shim and chip seals on here, there's not crack filling on here, but there's a micro-surfacing. So those are shown on this map as well.
In my hearing then, that, that's typical road. Repairs that need to be done.
Typically fifteen years, you're looking at doing something, for sure. If you want to save it from going worse, like in fact, seven those I've already gone and cracked from it because it had some pretty significant cracking.
You actually have a list of the roads and when repairs were made to those roads over the last twenty-five years?
I. Yes, I, I can't say how great the information is beyond, I think it was about twenty twelve. So we do have history, in fact, you have it, I believe in this package. Everything I have, I've given to you guys, so you can.
If you frustration, there is frustration.
Yes.
And I'm beginning to wonder if we accept less than we should when new developments come into place. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, and that's actually one of the things Dave and I have discussed, right, as, and with Jeremy, we need to talk about things like. When, when we have developers come in with these roads. You, we need to look at it from the town's perspective, knowing that we're gonna own it, right? So whether that's maybe not making them as wide or maybe, you know, making the drainage, so it's something we can actually maintain ourselves and they're not twenty feet deep. You know, maybe there's other methods, you know, such as. You know, roadside swales instead of drainage, which is better for water quality, there's all kinds of things that we can do, I think, to kind of change things a little bit. You know, I think that's more of a conversation that we have to have Jeremy as a whole to revamp our whole.
Out of curiosity, who has those conversations? Is that something that you do as a department? Do you bring in planning and zoning?
I would think we would have to talk with, with planning and zoning and the town manager and.
I think that's the short answer to your question is yes, I think you're really talking about, at least the three departments that are involved are. Public Works, the Town Manager's Office and Land, and Land use. I think you'll probably bring it in the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know that the, ultimately, the policy, if you will, related to roads comes here. We changed it not too long ago and you had to deal with that, so ultimately we end up here in that conversation.
Problem Kevin, that I face this all the time when I was at P and Z as a member and a chairman. The road standards that come out of this, this board call for those twenty-eight foot wide roads, most developers. Say, I'll build it if you want it, but you have to maintain it down the road and that's kind of the quandary we're in. Seven Hills never should have twenty-eight foot wide roads, they should have been cut down to twenty-two. Which white, because my, my philosophy is you've got a twenty-eight foot ride airstrip landing onto a mo hill, which is barely twenty feet wide. They aren't, they weren't needed, they weren't. Required or should, I mean, they were required, but they were not actually needed. But because they were required, they had to be built and now we're dealing with them. So that is something, I'd be happy to sit on that conversation with members of planning, zoning and everyone else and us as a group decide. To maybe give them more leeway. In doing that, because the problem is you needed a waiver and it's by a super majority. So if two people vote against it, that waiver is gone, so most developers don't want to take the chance because. If, if you're doing a development like that and you draw in all twenty-two foot wide roads, hoping, hoping you're gonna get that waiver and you don't. Now you've got to spend a whole lot of money on all new design and mapping and it just costs developer fortune. So they don't do it, they come in with the twenty-eight, here, here you go, this is what your regulations require, I'm building it. And, and it's bad and most people do and find out that, eh, environmentally it really isn't the best thing, long term.
And then the, the cost down the road for us to maintain is huge.
I think structurally, our roads are probably have always been okay, and I'll call our modern roads have been okay. And as you heard Matt allude to, I think that what you see on this list, including some of those that are probably the more frustrating ones. Are really getting to that point in their lives when they're gonna need some aggressive, I'll call it, preventative maintenance. Crack sealing is one of those things that you come through a road, two to five years after it's built, Matt will correct me if I'm wrong. But two to five years after it's built, you're going through doing crack sealing, because the whole goal, of course, is to keep water out. So anything and everything that we do in this conversation or that you're hearing about tonight is about. Preventing that, that two and a half percent or whatever you saw on that first page, how many of you caught that that was like one point seven million dollars? That's an enormous amount of money on a little tiny bit of our road because they've gone over the edge. That's what we're talking about tonight, that's trying to prevent that, that's the whole goal that Matt is trying to steer us to as a community, is having the knowledge. Of the long term. So that whether we do it through borrowed funds or we're doing it through, I'll call it cash or current taxes. We're getting the best from our buck as opposed to letting it go and having to come through and spend. Billions of dollars on a roadway that we'd rather not. I'll get off now.
Are there any more questions about that? I agree, yes.
Couple quick ones. The pictures that you talked about every ten feet, where, what is the cost of retaining that database and where is that maintained?
So that is maintained by beta and there's not an annual cost with that. The software is ours as long as we're running it. The only cost that's associated with using this program is every three years and it makes sense, in my opinion, do this is reevaluate. And that cost is about fifteen thousand dollars.
That's what, about forty-five thousand pictures?
It's a lot of pictures and thank goodness we don't have the whole.
Second question, I've noticed because I've watched over the years, some of our. Go through plowing in the winter and some of the roads are being basically dry plowed. Blade is scraping along, how much of that is causing the breakup of the roads?
Well, it, it definitely doesn't help on a chip seal road, you know, and I've tried to dial that back. Especially the roads that refresh the chip seals since I've been here and it hasn't been an issue, I, I can't say that they don't do it on other roads, they shouldn't be. That's not the normal operation, if the road is dry, you shouldn't be doing anything. If that, depending on the scenario. So.
I don't know if I should bring it up, but my own street I, I notice on here is Fairlawn Avenue. I walk it almost every day and the whole street is in need of. Repair, but there are two or three spots like at the junction of Laurel Glen. Or with Beach Crest or something that have broken up.
Yeah.
But then three, four, five hundred feet of pavement is in pretty good shape.
Right.
Scheduled for some kind of maintenance.
Yeah, so Laurel Glen actually is in here. That whole neighborhood and I've, I've got that scheduled as a mill in all of that. So what we would do is when you, we have these areas that are totally blown apart, we would go in there and we do what's called base patching. Where you cut out that asphalt, excavate out, you recompact the substrate and then you're putting in our appropriate. Structure, which is, you know, eight inches of process to hold and then four inches of asphalt. Or at that point, we would do two inches of asphalt because of.
The whole section.
No, that would just be whatever area, if you can see gravel and like you're saying, if this area is busted out, we would cut that out, fix it. Prior to milling and molding the whole thing. Because when you mill an overlay a whole road like that, you are, your, your base is good, but you have a good structure, right? But it's, you, you gotta get rid of that top layer of oxidized asphalt, because what happens is that starts to break up, you know, a lot of the water starts getting. So that's, that's the purpose of a non-fully, it seems to work. So yeah, so real quick, the, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, you can see is, you know, that's this year. I've got Abbey Road in there as a reclaim and then Edgerton Street. Again, we're trying, trying to reclaim both those roads in the spring. And Abbey Road, it's just a section from Cone to Anderson Way. That's, that actually came up in the cost benefit analysis as one of the worst roads to get fixed.
We didn't know that, we didn't check that.
It's actually very, very objective, right, it's very objective. Yeah, yeah, twenty twenty-three, you got Forest Street, Main Street, Hayes Road. And again, I, I've tried to lump the things together with. The, the different maintenance types of activities that are.
Matt, as you move on and before we go to. Before you go to the, the end of this, which talks about the, what we refer to as the administrative.
Oh, yeah, okay.
None of these are, are set in stone, so to speak, and we can move forward and backward, right?
And that's, that's important to keep in mind is that things do change, you know, based on asphalt prices or, you know, you may have a horrible winter that blows apart a road. Or I may have to adjust priorities, but this is just the plans, the starting point. And then, you know, I did also include, you can see at the end. Trying to rush through this, sorry, is the, also what I've tried to do is if I have salt money left over in the spring. I'm trying to throw that back in the roads, you know, if it's not as bad in winter, you know, so I've even gone and tried to list what roads I would attack with additional salt. And those are also tied into with, we're doing the capital problems. For what it's worth. Are, are there any questions or, and I know you guys got a full agenda, so.
Where, where do we stand with our. Surrounding communities? Our condition of our roads is to be theirs.
Well, I gotta, I don't go that way to office, so. I, Portland, I think is in a similar condition, I live in Portland, they do a lot of chip sealing and. In fact, I brought on a contractor that they're using there because I like what they do. It's like, that's why I use on White Birch and Mont Hill, which I think if you look at those roads. They came out really good, it's almost like a paved road, considering what we spent. If we put a lot of forework into that to make it that way. You know, I think we're, I think we're in good shape. We're not horrible, the road rating reflected, we're like a seat, you know, we're, we're average. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
A voice somewhere in the heavens.
Good evening, I will first off to say that my PowerPoint presentation is not as flashy as Matt's. I will be talking to him tomorrow, figure out some PowerPoint skills, but. For the record, my name is Dennis West, I'm the Chief of Police and I'm before you tonight to. Speak to you about the department selection of body worn cameras and in-car cameras. As the council knows and is aware, the police accountability bill requires. That the town of East Hampton have body worn cameras and in-car cameras in place by July one of twenty twenty-two. So to get a jump on it. And in preparing for the budget for the body worn cameras. I had to determine a place setter amount for capital outlay. When I originally proposed the budget to the town manager, I assumed the quote that I was giving him was for one year. I quickly contacted a couple vendors and got a scientific wild ass guess. Apologize for that, to figure out a quote on approximately how much it was going to cost. And the dollar amount that we originally determined was roughly a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Again, it was my assumption that that was what it was gonna cost for one year. So I presented that dollar amount to the town manager. For his inclusion into capital outlay projects. In February two thousand one, I began evaluating the body cameras. With the goal of selecting the best system, the easiest to use, the easiest to maintain. And the system would provide the best options for us for the safety of the officers using them. And what was gonna be the best value for our money being spent. Contacted the following vendors, Digital Ally, WatchGuard, Telreco, Bright, which is branded under G-Tech. And Axon. I met with the vendors either in person or by some type of remote video conferencing, next slide. And discovered that all vendors were basing their quotes on a five-year contract, not the one-year contract that I originally assumed. The one year was for equipment, storage, license fees and other related items. Years two through five included the storage, license fees and other related items. The quotes ranged anywhere from a hundred and seventeen thousand, a hundred and eighteen thousand to two hundred and forty thousand roughly. After a careful review, I selected two companies to test and evaluate their equipment. The first one being WatchGuard and the second one was Axon. I contacted both vendors with the goal of providing, getting devices for the officers to test and evaluate. Axon was the first vendor to supply me with the two body worn cameras. If the council recalls, I believe one of the council meetings I attended, I was actually wearing one of the small body worn cameras. WatchGuard initially told me the only way that I could get a body worn camera to test and evaluate was to buy them. And if I didn't like them, submit for a refund. That's normally how companies don't do that. When you talk about testing and evaluating, you don't have to buy it upfront. After several emails to multiple people within the company at WatchGuard, they failed to provide me with any T and E units other than a lengthy document that Tom McMahon and I sat down trying to figure out how we would integrate the body worn and in car camera systems into the town's current network to offload them into the cloud. It was just very confusing. The Axon, we got the two body worn cameras to test and evaluate. Literally the, the docking stations were plug and play. We walked over a cat six line, plugged in the camera and immediately was charging and offloading the videos. Ease of operation was exceptional as evaluated by the officers. They were very enthusiastic about the devices. So we tried to get the officers to take them on multiple shifts and multiple scenarios, whether it be motor vehicle stops or domestics or whatever the case may be. The ease of operation was especially important for myself and Tom McMahon, the town's IT person for ease of operation and download. The ability to live stream the body worn cameras is a very important aspect for the officer's safety. And when I say the ability to live stream, in an incident where an officer is involved and he becomes, he or she becomes incapacitated and we cannot get a hold of them. We have the ability remotely to log into his camera system and see what he sees remotely. So in theory, I could be in my house. Dispatch calls me, says, we can't find one of your officers. We've tried to locate him with the automatic vehicle locator. I could give them authorization to turn on the camera and we would be able to see what was. To me, that is a huge officer safety ability to be able to have, especially when you're, you can't find one of your officers. The next is the ability to recover video when an officer fails to start his camera. Under a stressful situation, he may forget, he or she may forget. But administratively, I could go back in there and record and recover that video that was recorded on his body worn camera. So if he's at a situation, he becomes incapacitated, knocked to the ground, assaulted in any way, unable to start his video camera. I could go back in there and pull that video out of the system and save it. Up base storage is the one in talking with Tom McMahon and actually Jeff Jelka is the one that we wanted to pursue for ease of operation. Secondly, we're required to store these videos for a long period of time. If something was happened to, was to happen to our server, we would be on the hook for our lost videos. By using cloud-based storage and the one that Axon uses, Microsoft Azure, they have two separate systems that store those videos. So if something was to happen and we could not recover a video, it would not be our responsibility. It would be the vendor's responsibility. Axon is currently used by 12 departments in Connecticut and that number is growing. Fifty-five major city chiefs use Axon, the biggest being LAPD. Various foreign countries, Italy, Canada, Australia, New Zealand, India and more use this device. Federal agencies are going onboard with them, the DEA, Department of Defense, US Customs and Border Patrol and the Forest Service. When you see a body worn camera on the TV, whether it be channel three, eight thirty or on national news, there is a high probability that you will see on the upper hand corner, Axon Body War Camera. It's a tried and true tested company. The cost over a five-year contract, the first year are almost fifty seven thousand, years two through five are going to be twenty two thousand, four hundred and eighteen thousand. Years two through five are storage, TAP, which is the replacement program licensing fees. And when I talk about TAP, tactical, technical assurance program, that means every two and a half years through this fee, we're going to get brand new body worn cameras. If within that two-year period, the company upgrades to a newer body worn camera, we get them for free. It's like an insurance policy. When we did the test and evaluate, one of the officers actually was helping a motorist. And when he bent into the car, his body worn camera caught on a child's safety seat. And he actually, the body worn camera fell off and was actually sitting in the child's safety seat. He let the motors go. As his body worn camera was missing and then realized and he stopped the car again about the body worn camera. But it's no question disaster replacement for the body worn cameras. They're mounted on their, their outermost uniform. They're going to have a tendency to fall off no matter what type of mountain you use. And the total five-year cost for Axon is about a hundred and forty six thousand, five hundred, which was about the middle of the road. The state of Connecticut OPM has made available under the police accountability bill, a thirty percent reimbursement for non-distressed towns. You can blame Jeff joke on that because he's doing such a good job. They do such a good job, we get fifty percent back. The thirty percent reimbursement only covers year one of expenses. Years two through five are responsibility of the police department or the town. And again, that covers storage fees, licenses and warranties.
Chief, the town prepaid five years, would it be covered?
No. I actually tried that with the OPM grant and it's coming up in one of the slides here. I was actually required to submit prior to any grant approval. It was suggested that I submit what we were going to submit to them in advance. And she went, Nicole Howe from OPM went through line by line to make sure that what we were going to put in for would be reimbursable. So it was kind of like double checks for us to make sure we were going to get the money back. We were entitled to. Axon's covered under Sourcewell, which is a property purchasing bid out of Indianapolis, Minnesota, one or the other. Finance Director Jeff Jilk is verified that we can utilize this contract. And Axon's a vendor I selected to outfit the department body worn in car cameras. We have negotiated the, the five-year agreement. And we are one week into the four-week delivery. So we expect those cameras, probably in the middle of October, we will roll out the body worn cameras first and then the in-car cameras. To be reimbursed from the grant, I need these devices installed in all of our police vehicles by December thirty first of this year. I'm trying to get ahead of it because I know that all the other police departments that are not where we are in this program are going to be fighting to get product in the, in the following year and it's going to be very difficult. So I'm trying to move as, as quick as I can. Again, I talked about Nicole Howe and the fifty-six thousand, it's eligible for the thirty percent. It's roughly. Yeah, ballpark around there. Yeah. This seventeen thousand.
This one out the bid?
It does not have to go on the bid because it was under state, under a contract, Sourcewell.
It was bid by them.
Yes, yes. So Sourcewell, what they did is they invited body worn camera and in car camera systems to submit to them a proposal. Because they were inviting anybody that wanted to. There was roughly, I believe, ten or eleven companies that submitted their proposal, their bid to Sourcewell. Sourcewell vetted them independent of any law enforcement agency. And then they came down with the five or six that they felt were reputable companies and that they were willing to put them on top of their, their contract. So you are correct. They were bidded out through Sourcewell. And we were able to piggyback that bid.
Just a little different the way we're doing things. Usually the bid comes before us versus this.
So Sourcewell is a company based out of Minnesota. And I think I have some information in here from. So Forcewell looked at a total of twenty different vendors. And who Sourcewell is? They're a procurement company that has requested the proposals from all video surveillance solutions. It's, it's a big, big conglomerate that a lot of different agencies can buy things from. They've been bidded out, vetted, Axon specifically has a contract with them. If you would like, I can get you exactly more information about the Sourcewell procurement portal that they have.
I, I, Chief, so as I understand it, then the, the Sourcewell is the avenue through which municipalities are able to obtain some sort of volume pricing that would otherwise not exist if they were to contract separately?
You, you are correct. Sourcewell is no different than if you bought off a state of Connecticut contract. It cannot, state of Connecticut, it's the same thing. If you wanted to get on the state of Connecticut contract and submit a proposal, the state would vet you out and then they would put you on the approved vendors. Sourcewell is the same type of system that allows for other agencies to piggyback on.
It, it, and the prices don't change depending on the number of municipalities that, that utilize their equipment?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it, it's just a, a flat rate regardless of whether or not one or twenty-five towns pull the approval lever?
Correct. The only difference would be the discount that you receive based upon the number of units that you buy. If you're an LAPD, you would receive a, a bigger discount.
I see.
Oh, there, there's a question, chief. Now, is each cruiser getting fitted with this or is it going to be when you go? Obviously each officer will have theirs when they go on shift. Now, is he going to take the camera and put one or are we going to fit every single cruiser we have with these cameras?
Excellent question. So every police vehicle that is used for patrol will have a in-car camera system mounted in it.
And that number is?
Nine.
Oh, okay. And then you, you are specific when you said patrols, I assume we have others we do.
So by the standards set forth in the police accountability bill, administrative vehicles not normally used for patrol are not required to have body worn cameras, or I'm sorry, in car camera systems installed in. The caveat is everyone that is in uniform, me included, is required to have a body worn camera. So if I go out in my unmarked vehicle to back the officers up or interact with the public, I am required to have a body worn camera. So there, there's no exception to that.
And, and I guess questions like coming to a meeting tonight, would you be required to wear one or would that be an exception on that because you're not going up to a patrol?
I would wear it just because I would be so comfortable wearing it. I would just leave it on all the time. I'm not required to activate it. I'm only required to activate it in a situation where I'm interacting with the public in which I'm taking a complaint. Or interacting with the public where I've had a non-consensual contact. If I, if I go out and I happen to come upon a motorist that needs assistance, I have to start it. If I go into a business to buy lunch, I don't have to start it. If that interaction, they start asking me about a criminal or a complaint, then I would have to start it. Yeah.
And, uh, uh, chief, then I, I guess that leads, I guess, to another question is, is, and maybe going back to what you said earlier. So the, the first step, I guess, for the, for the recordation through the body cam is the officer themselves triggering it. Is that correct?
Correct. There is triggers built into it for officer safety. If they turn the light bar on, on their cruiser, the in-car camera system will activate. If they're involved in a crash, the in-car camera system will activate. There's triggers that we will, we can choose to build into the activation that goes on automatically. The in-car camera and the body worn camera sync when the officer basically sits in the car. So when he turns on his in-car camera, his body worn camera syncs to it. So he can get out of the vehicle, his body worn cameras recording, also his in-car cameras recording. And then when you play back, you'll actually see the two videos simultaneously on the screen.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I guess I have a couple. Out of curiosity, how many other towns already have something like this in place?
So unfortunately, not many. There's, there's a lot of towns like East Hampton that are starting over from scratch. For example, Portland, I've been in contact with them to see what they're doing. They're on the fence. Middletown has not made a decision on what they're going to do. Middletown's much bigger than Portland and us. So there are, I would say probably more than fifty percent of the law enforcement agencies in Connecticut are going to have to start off fresh with their program of body worn cameras.
Is there a date when the all have to comply?
Yes, sir. July first of twenty twenty-two, everybody must be live. There was an article a couple of months ago, I think by the Connecticut Mirror that was, he was asking different law enforcement agencies where they were in the progress. And the article made it look like we were, you know, dragging our feet, but we were trying to figure out what we were going to buy. It's a lot of money. We want to make sure that we're investing in a quality product that is going to last us for, for years to come. And I, I didn't take it lightly. It's, it's a lot of money and I want it to last. I want it to be easy to use. Easy for my guys to use and easy for myself to use to validate the officers are, one, using the cameras correctly. And number two, I can recover information from them if I need it in a critical incident or in a complaint against an officer. And this, it's really easy to use. It's, we already have taser products, our tasers that we use now. It's the same evidence management system we're going to use. So it's like not learning a new system. We already have it. And one of the other benefits is our newest officer, the certified officer from Chicago, he extensively used the Axon body worn camera. So he is going to be tasked to be my training officer in this new rollout of the camera systems. So.
From your presentation, it appears that approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be expended over this five-year period. Obviously, things increase, but are we expecting to see a typical thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar increase? Or built into your budget annually after the five years to continue this program?
No. So what, in, in talking with the town manager and I, when we were talking about this overall project, what is proposed is we take the initial roughly fifty-six thousand dollars and buy the cameras, which we're doing, submit for reimbursement, which I'm going to do once we have all the bills and the checks back. And then the remaining funds in the capital is to take that money and use it to pay for years two through four of our yearly storage cost. And then incrementally increase my operating budget by roughly six thousand dollars a year. By year five, I will then be able to have enough money in my budget, in the operating budget to start paying forward for years five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, where I'm not asking for twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, increasing my budget that quickly the next year. That's a big jump. So we have a little money left over in there and just kind of pro-rate it every year. Meanwhile, just adding a little small amounts to the budget.
That's what I appreciate most is your thought process and planning it and making them safe.
I will be perfectly honest with you, that was a mistake on my part because I thought that dollar amount was what it was going to be for the first year. And in fact, I came to the town manager and I said, oops, I think I made a mistake. So it worked out in the end, but.
A chief, is there any issue because the data is being held by a third party through their own storage network? Any issues that have come up in the past regarding privacy or the like?
I know because you, you control it. I can control when the, how long the devices or the videos are saved. I can control when the items are deleted. I have total control.
I see.
And the way I look at it is I could be on vacation in the Cape and a critical incident could come in and I could go in from anywhere in the United States or the world for that matter. Play back the video. I could send it to the town manager and say, this is what we're looking at, regardless where he is. So the interoperability of doing that, and I figured whatever is good for the FBI, DEA, it is good for East Hampton PD for security.
Thank you.
Just one town manager, is there any action we need to take?
There is not. The purchasing policy of the town allows, as we sort of alluded to earlier, the purchasing policy of the town allows that because it was bid through another organization that we can move forward. And in fact, as Dennis mentioned, as the chief mentioned, he did make the order on my authority.
If anybody wants to see videos of what they look like, you know, I'd be more than happy to show them to you. Just there were some technical difficulties on my part getting them to display on the monitors. Thank you.
Put your head out and see if our No Six Land Trust members close.
We are on different contracts.
You have no bids or contracts.
This one's an ordinance policy approximately you do then it's a public hearing for an order to union article three. Chapter one, three is the code on the county of East Hampton regarding the Board of Finance term limits.
So as the council is aware and some of the residents are aware, late last week or middle of last week, we identified an interesting conundrum, if you will, with the town code. There are term limits established in the town code for both the Board of Finance and the Board of Education. The language, however, used in the term limits is different. And that created a little bit of a, I'm going to call confusion or a little bit of concern downstairs when a particular candidate came in this year and indicated a desire to continue their service on the Board of Finance. The short answer is that the town attorney was asked to interpret the ordinance and the interpretation was that the individual would not be able to continue their term or continue to seek a term on the Board of Finance. Had the language been the same as the language for the Board of Education, they would have. In short, with the staff is coming forward suggesting to you that because the language is ambiguous at best, it was a little bit difficult, as the council knows and as the package includes, it was a little bit difficult to arrive at the conclusion that was arrived upon. So I'm encouraging the council to really take a look at that and decide whether the interpretation that has been made is the one we like, the one we want, or whether we should change the ordinance to reflect the same term limit discussion for Board of Education and Board of Finance. And the crux of the matter is the use of the word served, or serve rather, as opposed to elected. Board of Finance uses the phrase, an individual may not serve more than two terms. And the Board of Education uses the phrase, shall not be elected to more than two terms consecutively. And by not using the same language, they have different end results. So the, on behalf of staff, I'm encouraging you to change that so that it is the more favorable ability for the electorate to decide twice to use an individual on a body. And if they happen to be appointed to fill a vacancy, that sort of doesn't count.
I like the fact, keeping everything the same. It's much better. I feel more than sure of it.
I agree. Who knows? It was done 20 some odd year, 30 some odd years ago. No idea why the language was different for each of them. They seem to be contemporaneous, but.
And so you're suggesting that we adopt, I guess, option B, I guess, in the package?
Yes. So I included in the package two ordinances that are virtually identical with the exception of that language. And as you point out, Councilor Johnson, item B or ordinance B identifies that the last sentence would be changed to, as I said, read, no member shall be elected to more than two consecutive terms.
And that's the language identical for the Board of Education?
That is correct.
Well, I certainly agree with Mark that it seemed to make sense to have it be consistent across the board.
If the council desires to move ahead this way, it would be appropriate to adopt a motion to set a public hearing on the ordinance presented as B for your next regular meeting. If in fact, the council goes ahead and decides to adopt that ordinance that evening, it would become effective in late October, in advance of the November election. That individual could run if they chose to.
Do you need a motion to set a public?
That would be appropriate, yeah.
Second.
Just a comment.
Do we have discussion?
It seems that if those involved with making the appointments of fill a vacancy had done a better job at counting, we wouldn't have to even face this at all, save a lot of legal fees in the process.
Well, so the oddity there is that the guidance that was found is that if it's more than half of a vacant or of a vacant term, it's considered a full term. So I think if someone, and I didn't do the math, but I think if someone did the math, it's about five days. But who wants to have to wrestle with that beast and count the days in a particular term and cut it in half and make sure you wait a week to appoint somebody? I agree. We could have whomever was making the appointment six years ago or whatever it was.
And it is, was there any history in the files of why there were two different ordinances or procedures set up in the first place?
None that we identified, no.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Here and now, all those in favor of studying the public hearing for, it's our next meeting, right?
Correct.
We need to make it clear that we're dealing with option B?
Option B. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both. Most in care.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Thank you.
Can you visit subcommittee report updates?
The, my agenda notes do provide some updates on just what's been going on if the folks want to just move from there.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I just was going to say that the agenda, the agenda governmental does provide a quick update on the activity of the two committees and the bid meet since your last conversation, since your last meeting. I don't know if you want to go through that or you just want to roll on because one of them has an item coming up under the business.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that since one of the items on new business will be the subcommittee regarding water, that whatever we have under item 8A, we just continue to the new business.
No, I was just going to say we actually had our first meeting on the American Rescue Plan funding. And we had a few, what I'm going to call, our department heads gave the their Christmas list maybe, for lack of a better word, but what they're looking for. And we had the chief was on board with us and we also had a lot of people from East Hampton that ones there. And kind of gave us some things that they were looking for.
The other subcommittees? Okay, we'll move on to the first, that's for support of open space, watershed land acquisition.
Tom Heidel for the, am I okay right here?
Yeah, you.
Yeah. Tom Heidel for the No Six Land Trust. We're seeking a letter of support. What we're trying to do is preserve 147 acres adjacent to Washama Six State Forest. Only 1.8 acres is actually in East Hampton. The rest is in Portland. But it necessitates us going to both towns and getting letters of support from the four boards for each town. What we're trying to do, the letters of support will go towards an Oswald grant, which might pay up to like 50% of the total cost of this purchase. And so the Oswald grant is, you know, a state funded open space watershed acquisition grant. They come out once a year and there's a lot of competition for them. And the grants are actually pretty extensive as far as all the prep work and how detailed you have to be with them. And so every little bit is, you know, goes a long way towards completing the application and knowing that the towns are involved and support this. So that's essentially it. There's a, I know that you all have a pamphlet up there with some information and there's actually a pre-written letter of support. And just to make it easy, if that's how you think it should be.
Tell them a couple of things.
Sure.
Would you give your home address for the record?
Yes, it's Tom Heidel and it's 39 Patten Neck Road in East Hampton.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Dean.
And you answered my first question, which I was wondering, the 147 acres, but 145 of that is actually Portland?
Correct.
I was concerned what tax revenue loss there might have been in East Hampton, but it's 1.8 acres. I don't think there's much.
You know, yeah, and it's undeveloped. So it's probably not a lot. But you know, think about the, you know, the flip side of that is you're preserving land for mass. You can't put a price on that name, right?
Right.
And is there a forum that you all have submitted to the town manager for us, a formal letter, I should say?
Yes, correct. Yep. There is a, there's three things in there. There's an information package. It was like the brochure that we've put out sort of detailing the all the benefits of the property, all the good things about the property, you know. You know, where it is and the animal habitats and all this great stuff on there. And then I gotta say, the second, so the second part of it is a key points letter, which sort of takes that brochure and reduces it to easy reading. And then there's an actual pro forma letter in there addressed to Stuart Winquist, who's the current president of the land trust. So because we've thought out, I've already been in the wetlands, PNC, the Conservation Commission just passed it and you know, this is my final stop here in East Hampton.
David, I see the, I see the fact sheet and whatnot. I don't see the, am I just missing the letter?
We didn't, I didn't put the letter in because it literally is just a letter that says we support.
Okay.
I didn't put it in.
Okay.
But it's, you have it on.
We do. We have it. And we'll use it as the basis of the letter from the council.
Sure.
Assuming you approve.
Yep.
Well, I move that we support the proposed acquisition.
We have a motion? Do we have any discussion? Here and now, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both motion carries.
Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do possible approval of the Board of Education capital transfer transfer for middle school emergency lighting and lighted exit signs.
I'll take care of this one. This is an item that's coming forward from both the Capital Improvements Committee and the Board of Finance. A while back, the Board of Education came in with a request to officially move funds from, I believe it's HVAC work in the fiscal '21, so the fiscal year that just ended, capital budget, and move it to an expense related to, as you can see, emergency lighting, emergency exit signs at, I think it's the middle school?
Middle school.
Yes. At the middle school. And it was an unanticipated project that they had to undertake. And the request is to go ahead and use those funds that would have been expended on HVAC had it been necessary to move them into school safety. So that's the crux of the proposal. The Capital Improvements Committee, as I said, met, approved and recommended approval. The Board of Finance met and recommended approval and it's now in the council's hands to finalize the action.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have discussion.
Just one quick question. I'm assuming though that the the issue of HVAC at the middle school is still an issue. It's just that this has become an issue that is rising above that at all.
That is true. Recall that one of the ways that the Board of Education does, I'll call it capital planning for that 25,000 that you'll see is repeated generally almost every year in HVAC. They almost use that as an insurance policy. Sort of anticipating that they're going to have, because of the age of the units on their buildings, they're going to have a failure in a rooftop unit or a major component that they're going to need to replace or that they're going to need to have undertake major capital improvement type service. So they are still an issue. You'll see that come back again and ultimately with a new facilities director, we may take a slightly different tack on that, but the HVAC issues don't go away. But this year, they happen to be fortunate enough that they're able to move those funds elsewhere because of the priority, as you put it, of the other project.
David, I know that this is not your Valley Wick, but I guess following up maybe Kevin's question is, does the Board of Ed, do they also have sort of a sinking fund with respect to the roof and things like that?
Not necessarily a sinking fund. Now, you will note that the, for example, the roof that you mentioned happens to be the middle school as well is scheduled in one or two years, I can't recall, for a replacement. So they have a lot, they have some items that they've noted out as long-term for improvement. And those are shown on the capital improvements file, so.
Okay. It's on the capital side then?
It is on, it is in the capital reserve fund. The roof is showing, as I said, it's either 23 or 24 at in excess of a million dollars. Review the entire roof of the middle school.
Residents are spending a fortune for raincoats for their kids.
David, ARP funds being used for this lighting or conversely, could in using these funds now, could we use ARP funds for HVAC work?
The latter is probably more possible under ARP. We're continuing to sharpen that view. But if you look at the theme of the ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan funds, with a theme of responding to the pandemic or those types of issues, HVAC might be a possibility. Now, I will take a step and say, as a reminder, a lot of the funding that was given to the school district by the state in COVID relief monies earlier in the pandemic were used for certain HVAC, mainly air exchange, air earlier in the pandemic were used for certain HVAC, mainly air exchange, air quality issues and restoring some exhausting and things like that. So they may have done what they need to do that would qualify, but that's a long way of saying maybe the latter, but I wouldn't put a lot of stock in it, so.
We have a motion?
You do.
Yes. We have the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Review and possible approval engineer firm for water system evaluation design.
So, Councilmember Johnson, are we gonna flip a coin? Which of us?
Well, well, no, I, I flipped and, and, and you won, so.
Oh, excellent.
You can, no, you can go ahead and talk. There you go. The, that's, that's, you didn't see that, but I did already flip that coin.
Oh, I, I missed it. I must have been somewhere else. So, the water subcommittee, as was alluded to, has met on a number of occasions to review the responses that were received to the town's request for qualifications document for water system engineers. I'll remind you that the, the proposals were received from five engineering firms. All Connecticut-based engineering firms from Weathersfield, Lastonberry, Middletown. Basically our neighbors. They were reviewed and three of the firms were invited to come in and provide a presentation on not only their understanding of East Hampton and East Hampton's needs and goals as it relates to water, but of course on their firm and their firm's abilities to assist us in that regard. As I said, three of those firms were interviewed. After those interviews were complete, the committee met and went off the list down to two again. And those two firms were vetted using their references. So we made some contacts to, I made some contacts to other municipalities that had large projects or projects that were similar. One for the, the firm that's being recommended was very similar, I think, to what we potentially face. And after reviewing those, those references and discussing that again at the committee, it was determined to recommend environmental partners. Environmental partners of Middletown. Not only are they, of course, they're all high-quality firms. High and Bond was in that group. Many of us know of them. They've worked for us before. Lennar and others, all high-quality firms. So I think what set environmental partners apart was the fact that they had a very large project, very similar to what East Hampton will be going through with source identification and in the long-term expansion of the system, or in that case, implementation of a brand-new system in Massachusetts. And that municipality spoke very highly of them. Spoke in terms of, of not only their ability to, of course, do the design and be creative in handling that activity, but also facilitating public conversation. And that was really an important aspect that I think the subcommittee was looking at, was the ability of an engineering firm to assist the town, the official entity of the town, in facilitating a conversation with the community, because of course this body had always talked about that being an important aspect of moving this project forward. There was also discussion about the, the quality of hydrogeologists and their ability to identify source and a variety of other things. One of the other thought, I, I, items that was really quite quality and was a good quality piece of, of input was the fact that we actually had the opportunity to talk to one of our immediate neighbors who's used both firms. And I think really in, in that comment, while they were both quality firms, I think it really was that ability in a public forum to really help facilitate conversation that really bugged environmental partners up. So I think the goal of the, of the committee this evening, that is the subcommittee this evening, is to get the council to review and concur with them that environmental partners is a quality firm that can work with the town and that we should go forward with identifying a final scope of services for the first phase of the project and get them to quote that for us so that that quote can come back to the council for official action. That's where we are. There's a recommendation from the subcommittee to authorize further exploration of a quote from environmental partners.
If I just may add to the council and just echo some of the comments that Dave has made, I, I think that while all the, certainly the final companies, they all were of high quality and, and obviously excellent engineers. I think, at least certainly from my perspective, that, that the environmental partners, they kind of checked off all the appropriate boxes, so to speak. They also were the only company that brought in an outside financial advisor as part of the team. I thought was essential to have someone that could provide that type of expertise in their analysis of, of the project. They have a very good hydrologist team. And as David alluded to, that, that this engineering firm were able really to put together a water system from nuts to bolts, really under budget in, in, in a way that I think, I think impressed all the members on that subcommittee. So I, I, on behalf of the subcommittee, would recommend strongly to the council that we go forward with environmental partners.
Another motion?
I so moved.
We have a second.
Second.
We have any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm going to invite the chief back up to chat with you about six general orders, two really pull-out replacements and four updates based on those replacements. You were forewarned, right? Chief told you hit you back.
Thank you. First of all, to answer, go back and answer the question from Councilman Pullhauer about Sourcewell. It's a member-focused public cooperation of more than fifty thousand member agencies throughout the United States. And Sourcewell is a municipal contracting agency that operates as a public entity under legislative action through Minnesota Statute one, two, three subsection A, which God bless Google.
If it's on the phone, it must be true.
I don't know about that.
There you go. There you go.
Anyway, tonight before you, I have several general orders. Most of the general orders, as the town manager has alluded to, are just updating and two are brand-new. So, Use of Force General Order, which you have before you, General Order three point one, is an existing general order which had to be totally rewritten to be in compliance with the new mandatory use of force policy issued by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council on August thirteenth, twenty twenty one. As you may recall, before council, less than a month ago, I was presenting you with this use of force policy and now I'm asking you to reapprove it. The three main differences in this use of force policy from the previous one is that added language that stated all police officers must comply with this policy and uphold the legal, moral, and ethical obligations of their sworn service to the public. It also added language that an EMS response shall be requested for any person subject to the use of a firearm, impact weapon, impact projectile, a conducted electrical weapon, commonly referred to as a taser, OC spray, or a canine apprehension. This specifically requires that the ambulance or a ambulance respond to the scene after any one of these devices are used. Before, we had the ability as EMR first responders in East Hampton to provide first aid, but that has been taken away from us. The last significant added language is it adds, in accordance with state law, evaluation of an officer's actions related to the use of deadly force will consider, but are not limited to, the following factors. Officers should be aware that the statutory language, but are not limited to, may mean that factors not specified in law or in this policy are considered in evaluating an officer's actions.
All right. What does that mean? Totally confusing when it.
Yeah. So it is a little confusing and if you, if you go back to when it talks about what is morally right or wrong. If you go to the definition of the Oxford Languages, it talks about moral. Concern with the principles of right and wrong, behavior and the goodness or badness of human character. Your views or someone else's views may be different than my views or any one of your views. Who decides which view is correct? And that is a question that police officers and police chiefs all across the state of Connecticut have. Before, we were judged based upon policy and rule of law. Now they're adding things in. You may be judged by other things. Well, what are other things? And that is troublesome to law enforcement officers across the state of Connecticut. I have an answer for you.
So, to be clear, are coming out of that police accountability bill that basically forced you to put this language in here that is very unclear and very subject.
Yes, sir. The use of force policy that you have before you is taken directly out of a document released by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. And agencies were told you will adopt it.
Verbatim.
Verbatim. You can add to it, make it more restrictive, but you cannot make it more lenient. And we've tried to get answers and there are no answers. And it's, you know, the being, like I said, being judged by a rule of law is easy, what's right or wrong, but now it's open to interpretation. Someone else may think something else is morally wrong when you and I or anybody else may think it's not morally wrong. So whose morals are you going to be judged by? And additionally, if someone believes that they're going to look at any use of force by a police officer but are not limited to any factor not in law or policy, may be considered to evaluate his officer's actions. Who considers what they're going to judge the officer's actions on? If that person that is deciding and able to judge the officer decides that it was not appropriate for the officer to use deadly force, even legally he was able to do it and even with policy he was able to do it, the officer still can be judged as it's not justified. And that is a huge issue in law enforcement right now.
Who, who is to judge? If you refer to being judged.
So thankfully, any use of force that causes significant injury or death by a police officer in the state of Connecticut, by statute, that use of force is looked into and investigated by the state's attorney's office. So that agency would look into it. But even though the state's attorney looked into it, a police officer's actions could be found unjustified and an officer can be decertified based upon a group, which we have still not totally understand who that group is. So to clarify, the state's attorney could clear us. The state's attorney upon the investigation could say it's not justified. But they then could go to post-council and if they could convince post-council that our use of force was not justified, the officer would be decertified. I don't have all the answers to you. You could ask five or six different police chiefs and they would come up with a different, you know, analysis of this, this general order. But it's very clear that, that phrase, but not limited to, is open to interpretation. And as I stated before, you know, the, the state's attorney and the Connecticut State Police are very good at doing what they're, what, what they're charged to do is investigating our use of force. But when you start putting things like that in the use of force policy, it's troublesome to law enforcement.
But, but included but limited to is a very standard language that's often seen in statutes and, and that governs behavior beyond, beyond the police. We use that language in a variety of different contexts involving individual behavior. So I don't necessarily share that you're concerned with respect to that. I would though, if, if, if I may, if I'm looking at, in your cover letter, chief, you've got the, at the language and paragraph number three, the added language. Where does that coming, if you could refer me actually into the text itself?
So if you refer to page ten, it's under D, second paragraph. So page ten.
I, hey.
B, post-event review of deadly force incidents, second paragraph. Officers must be aware. And then if you go down to the last paragraph says officers should be aware, which is the caution language. It's basically repeated again.
But you, you're assuming that that language only cuts in, you're assuming that that language only cuts against police officers. That language can be cut in favor of as well.
I'm not assuming anything. I'm only saying what language is in there and who's going to interpret it.
But it can be interpreted by other people. I mean, I guess my point is that the language is objective in the sense that it, it, you're assuming that the language is going to be interpreted in a way that is harmful in terms of evaluating the conduct of the, of the, of the, of the officer. It's equally possible that the language could be interpreted in a way that's beneficial.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but this is new language. It's never been in use of force police officer language before.
I, I appreciate that, but, but, but I, I guess there's another way to, it could actually be working in your favor, I guess.
So the same thing you're doing is the same thing that could be used to judge an officer's actions. So that's the only thing I'm bringing up. The differences between the existing language and this language. And it was repeated twice.
I do have a, going back to your, I guess the one question I did have is, I'm just assuming, chief, that with respect to the, this general order, that, that, the, the changes are so significant that what didn't make sense to, to redline or identify the changes from the prior order, I'm assuming that's the case. Is that true?
That's correct.
Yes. And I guess I did have a question then, looking, I guess just generally. So is the language, just as an example, is on page four of, again, of section three point one, Rules of Conduct, Use of Force, where you've got four A, the duty to render aid? Is the first paragraph, was that, was that in the old? Was the first paragraph in the old a general order and the second paragraph is a new one?
So sections or parts of that was in the other Use of Force General Order. You are correct. We, we had a duty to render aid. That part of that was in there, almost verbatim. The second paragraph under duty to render aid is new.
That's the new one. Okay. I just want to, I, I, I just, I know that you highlighted some of the big, the big changes. I didn't know if, if that first paragraph was also had been tweaked in any way.
So the, the policy you have before you, basically I, I took the state mandated policy and just put it down there verbatim, just for ease, because I would have had too many reds and yellows crossing out.
I know, I know. I appreciate that. No, I, I'd probably, we maybe need our three D glasses, I guess.
I, I, I would say that the only thing that deviates from the state mandated policy is on the very last page, actually second to last page, when it talks about training. And authorized weapons and less lethal options. We have to comply with Connecticut law enforcement standards and practices through the police academy. And in conversation with the director of the police academy was oversight. That they left out the authorized weapons and the required training. So those two things I added to the use of force policy. In hopes that when they do include it, I don't have to come back and ask for another approval of the use of force. Policy. But everything else beyond that is basically verbatim from what they wrote.
I guess I had one, just kind of, just really for my edification. On page nine of that. Again, section three point one of the use of force. And looking at that. I guess it would be paragraph, it would be section nine. A subparagraph three that is on that that page. Page nine. We're talking about permissible use of deadly force. And the paragraph begins prevent the escape, prevent the escape. That language.
Yes.
See that? I just, again, a question regarding. What if a? That language is very tight in the sense is preventing an escape. What if someone has already escaped? Would that would that fall within the pursuit? I think we have another policy on pursuit, don't we? But but. How does that? The language says prevent the escape, but what if someone has already escaped? Would that be, would that fall outside the permissible use of deadly force?
It would depend on the circumstances if the person escaped. If he or she was in possession of a weapon. If he or she committed a violent felony. And if there was some degree of assurance that they were going to commit those violent acts again. The pursuit, the pursuit statute only applies to vehicles. And this. Could be considered that, but it's more of like a person on person without a vehicle being involved.
I just wanted in terms of language, I mean, I, when I read that, I read that to mean maybe something that you're suggesting. I guess I was reading a bit more, I guess. Literal, more strict. To make a distinction between. Preventing escape and after someone has already escaped. And what you're saying is that language is broader to provide for the use of deadly force. So long as any of the conditions A, B, and C of that subparagraph has been have met.
It specifically brings into the. Supreme Court decision Tennessee versus Gardner. Where the police shot a suspect that was running away from a nonviolent felony. And that's Supreme Court decision prohibits us now from from using deadly force.
That's right. That was kind of, that's that's exactly right. So so that is correct. I, again, I. It's certainly narrow point.
Okay. We have any other questions for the chief?
Chief, my presume. What you're asking us is to adopt. Your recommendations tonight. But with certain caveats. Because of this, the language, but not. But are not limited to, you're forewarning us. May or may not come. As part of this ongoing process is we be reporting to us periodically. What impact that language has had around the state and what. We may or may not be exposed to. And I guess ultimately the buck stops here, so we have an interest in that.
I'm understanding. My plan is, excuse me, on a yearly basis. I have to do a report. To post counsel in Meriden. About our use of force for the entire department, whether it be OC, the K nine firearms or any such use of force. My plan going forward is to at the probably. The first of the year, second week of the year is to prepare a report to the town manager of the department's use of force. It's a report that I have to, you know. Fulfill because it's a it's a state law and I'm in turn going to send that to the town manager. I can certainly make sure that's included. In the report I give to the town manager. So the town council is aware of the force of. That we use. I would tell you that we use force that is reportable. Taser, baton, OC, strikes with the hands or the firearms. We have not had a taser use in two years. In fact, the only one we've had in three years was the one that happened on Lake Pocatay Pog. We've had one OC event in three years. We had one baton strike last year. And we use force so little. Because the officers are very well trained. They're professional. And they are very good about deescalating when they talk to individuals. And that's why I'm so proud of the officers that work here is they're very good at talking. They would rather talk than use force. So to answer your question, yes. I'm looking for the approval of this general orders and I just brought up the differences. For the council to be aware of. Because you probably will see them again.
I'd like to make a motion to approve police department general orders. Three dash one, use of force, force, three dash two, conducted electrical weapons. Three dash three, use of chemical agents, three dash four, impact weapons, three dash five, reporting and investigating force. Five dash twenty-three, use of body worn and dashboard cameras.
We have discussion.
I had just one follow up question. I didn't realize we were going to put them all together. I guess I'll just. One quick question with respect to with respect to. Section three point two, chief. I guess it's page three. It's the red line changes.
On what general order?
It's, I think it's section three point two. What do you call it here? It's. I just see general order three point two, rules of conduct. It's the second, I think, order after the after the deadly force order.
Yep, conducted electrical weapon three point two.
Yes, I guess, just a quick question in terms of. Training for the police department. I noticed that the change is that. Maybe it's not a change. The language is the policy that all officers shall render aid. Do we have special training or do we do? Given the change in the 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 language. Do we have provide additional training for our officers in connection with this?
In connection to providing.
Render aid, which says it shows the policy that all officers shall render aid. Do we do? That that language, is there anything that we do in particular to be able to? To comply with that in terms of training for our officers?
Sure, that training would be a part of their EMS training or their.
I see, okay.
Response training. So whether you'd be treating a cut, a bruise. Contusion or a broken arm, it would all it would all be the same as their standard.
It's nothing, it's nothing unique because this involves using electrical, I mean, I just. I didn't know if there's a different types of training because of the nature of the. In the context of using these, the tasers, it was a different type of issue.
Having taken a fifteen second constant exposure to the taser. It's no different. Pull the probes and away you go.
Okay. Thank you.
All over in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I know that was a lot.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So you have actually four job descriptions in front of you tonight. Let me just clarify that while they're listed as being public works, really the first one. Is part of the facilities division, which is now more distinct from public works because of the. The change that brought us the joint facility superintendent that we share with the police, or rather with the Board of Education. So we have four job descriptions for you to consider this evening. The first is the crew leader for building maintenance. This is a position that we have today. Currently, the individual that occupies this position is primarily assigned to the library. But they can work virtually anywhere as directed by the facilities director. And anywhere in the general government side of the town owned buildings. That's the only distinction we maintain for. Employees who work under the the facilities director is that we keep them in the side of the budget that they're paid on, at least right now. And that's primarily because of union contracts and things of that sort. But anyway, this particular description is taken from the a similar description that said the. In the public works department, that's the origin of the description. But it's really modified and updated to be clear that it's all building maintenance related. And it really calls upon this individual to render most directly assistance to the facilities director in. Whether that means. Monitoring contractors or letting contractors in, providing initial response. When there's a an overnight issue if necessary. But basically puts them in a position to sort of lead the crew and provide that assistance as well as, of course. Undertake their normal duties for simple cleaning and custodial obligations in a particular facility. You'll recall that about a year ago, we moved someone into this position. Even before it was updated to this as part of a of a settlement of an agreement of grievance. Related to how we're using the position, how we're losing the individual more accurately. So that's the first one as it relates to facilities. Again, that individual reports directly to the joint facilities director. And provides lead assistance to that individual. But can work anywhere in the general government side.
Mr. Cox, is this the only individual right now that is? Maintaining the library facility? Do you have any other people at the library maintaining that facility or is it the individual that happens to be? Possibly or is fulfilling this role is doing that as well?
Yes. He maintained, he is primarily assigned to the library. But as I said, all of the, all two of the facilities people who work. On the general government side roam everywhere. So they. They do work at both the town hall and the library seizure center. They do public works together. They do. Fire stations, all of that stuff. And when they're in that capacity of, if you will, roaming. The leader is is the individual from the library.
I'd like to know what you describe as. Semi skilled tasks include carpentry, plumbing, electrical, HVAC. What would that be?
I'm going to call that basic. Basic level maintenance, you know. You know, it could be a clog sink, it could be an easy swap of a plumbing piece that doesn't require replumbing something significant. It could be. It might rise to the level of something more significant. On the electrical side. The reason we use the semi skilled and put in that caveat of the professional professional intervention. Is because we're not expecting this person to be a licensed electrician or a licensed plumber. Or that sort of thing, that they can handle basic functions in those things. HVAC might be. You know, it's going to be certainly filter changes and maybe there's some, I'm making up things here at this point, lubrication or maybe even a belt change. But. If it's beyond that. We're going to bring in a professional. That's sort of what the. The effort was to try to imply that this individual needs to have some skills. But that we're not going to require them to be licensed. The one.
I I think. When honestly this position was thought out a little bit more. And you included. The idea of having to have A trade license. Or the difference in pay. You would have been able to get more work done without having to call a contractor in. Because now you have an electrician on staff, a plumber, or maybe that guy, whichever the one of three you pick. Very, once in a while, you can get somebody that has both licenses, but those are two of our queen. Plus you probably pay a lot more. I would have liked to see that since we raised to a different elevation of pay scale. The skill set should have went with it as far as I'm concerned because. One guy has called himself a crew leader who sits in a building. I mean, I know it was part of a settlement, but I. I had a problem with that settlement day one.
I understand.
And I think in creating this job description, that should have put in there and you went outside to hire somebody to replace that. Do that spot, it would have been better suited for the town and the town would have benefited more.
I'm going to say so noted. I don't want that to sound dismissive.
No, I. I understand.
I think that there there could be some possibilities there and it's always worth talking about. As we look into the future and how we do our business, constantly having to evaluate these things.
The more buildings you add, the more technical the buildings get. You ultimately get to the point where. It is actually better to have a light bay guy, a little more, have a licensed guy on staff. Because he saves you those two, three hundred dollar calls that you might be doing on a daily basis. And if you look at the numbers over time. I mean, that's something you guys got to sit down and look and say, look, we had. This guy in here with a license. We would save his salary twice over a year and now it becomes worthwhile to hire that individual.
Absolutely. I completely understand and I think that's wise advice. I think it's good for us to consider that. Thank you.
Are we under a restriction to? Are you under a time issue with all of these things?
With all of it? No, I'm not. Trying to get them done so that we can. So that we can have them behind us, if you will, have people operating. I will tell you that. The other ones, the ones that are related to the mechanic shop. In order to help them move ahead, and I wasn't thinking of you when I was making that deal. In order to help them move ahead, I did make as part of the agreement when we ratified their contract. That until these were approved, we wouldn't move anybody to the new pay scale. So.
This seems like a lot for us to. You know, send to. Without a little thought, that's my own concern.
Would postpone this to the next meeting? For anybody?
Our mechanics aide would be disappointed that he has to wait two weeks for a reclassification to mechanic. But we can resolve that, I'm sure. If you have to leave time.
We may have questions. Before our next meeting, but you and I are now before then, we'll be ready.
Sure. Up to the council. The union has reviewed these and is comfortable with the way the descriptions are in comparison to the way the function, the positions are functioning today.
Are you making that a forward motion?
I'll make a motion to table it to next meeting.
To table it?
Our next meeting.
You have a motion on the floor to table?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Here none. All those in favor of tableing this?
Aye.
We have one, two, three. Four. You and I. So we have four in favor. Opposed. One.
I oppose.
Two. Three. Most of the passes.
Okay. If you have questions, certainly can we.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the interest of the hour, I'm just going to hit on three items, if I may. As you recall, in the town manager's report that is always is included in the package and on the town website. I indicated that the staff is going to be looking at a joint, no pun intended, marijuana regulation conversation. Between the town council and the planning and zoning commission. Right now, it appears as though. And I haven't polled any of you, but we're looking to try and do that next Tuesday. At about six thirty in the evening here in this room. Kathy and I will be getting ahold of you. Read that, it's probably primarily Kathy. We'll be getting ahold of you tomorrow and Thursday to see if that. Read that as probably primarily Kathy. We'll be getting ahold of you tomorrow and Thursday to see if that will work for you. A week from today in this room to talk about how we want to proceed, or at least begin to talk about how we want to proceed with marijuana regulation. That's not an official meeting yet. It's just a poll. I just thought I'd let you know. Two other items that I wanted to mention this evening that I think are probably, that are good news and exciting news for us. Yesterday, I had the opportunity of, of going over to the Board of Education meeting and see the Board of Education recognize Chief Westner and our police department as a friend of education. Nominated at the district wide level for really the chief's ongoing and the department's ongoing support of safety and student success. Which was, is how they describe the relationship that they have. So I, I thanked the chief after that, after he received that recognition for really representing the town well and representing, if you will, the general government side of the town to the education side and providing support to them in any way we can. So. Kudos to the chief and I thank him for that and to the department for being named a friend of education. Additionally, yesterday, we received notification and it's, it's always exciting, but thankfully almost becoming commonplace for us. Yesterday, we received notification from GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, that yet again, East Hampton has been granted or has been issued a certificate of achievement for financial reporting. I know many of you paw through this bad boy every year. Our so-called audit, but it's the end of the year financial report and audit that gets presented to the community and to bonding agencies and others that are involved in financing the town's operation about our stats and about how we're doing. And it's about how we present that information. It's best we can clean and clear and, and plain language. So yet again, kudos go out to Finance Director Jeff Gilka and his staff for providing the community and, and you with a clean and clear financial report on an annual basis. This particular award was for fiscal twenty twenty, which would have been reported on in late twenty or early twenty-one. So. Those are the three items I wanted to emphasize tonight. Two, of course, are, are not on the report, but if there are things on the report that folks want to ask me about, certainly let me know. Otherwise, in the interest of a long meeting, that would be my comments.
One quick question on the chief is here. You have this report about the Narcan.
Narcan use, yes.
Just a question. I, I wasn't going to draw it up, but I'm looking through this. How many of those uses of Narcan have been repeat?
Repeat uses on an individual, not at the same time, but days apart or something? Chief, do you have any knowledge of what that might be?
And I guess if there are, what can we revise that?
So just so I understand your question, you're asking if anyone on the list is a repeat user of Narcan?
Yes.
So I'll draw your attention to the one that occurred on October twelfth, twenty twenty. And, I'm sorry, check that, June twenty-second, twenty twenty. Were a male and female. We're both Narcan. The male was Narcan three times and the female once. Those are repeat Narcan individuals. To the point where one of the parties actually carries Narcan on his person. So we, we tried, this person has been in and out of treatment. You know, we, every time we have an individual where we use Narcan on them. We try to obviously get them to a mental health professional, which is usually a committal to force them to go to treatment to a hospital. Narcan wears off relatively quickly. It works very fast where the individual snaps out and they become sometimes become very violent. And they're very upset at police because we basically took away their high. But they're not making a rational decision. So we end up committing them to a hospital to be evaluated to make sure that they don't relapse. And some of these individuals just do not want any help. They don't want help from public professionals. They don't want any type of drug treatment. And it's very tough and it's disheartening for us when we see repeat users of Narcan that we would like to be able to take them and get them help. Some people were able to help and some people just don't want to be helped. On this list, without going into the actual date, is a family in town where their son is a habitual one. We end up Narcanning. And unfortunately, the family knows one time they're not going to be there to either administer Narcan or dial nine one one. And it's, it's painful for us because obviously we want to save everybody, but unfortunately some people just don't want our help. Or any help for that matter. So, did I answer your question?
Yes. Second question, it seems that we have according to the supposedly high incidence of heroin use and fentanyl.
Yes, we do. And we're not, we're not any different than any other surrounding town. The, the problem is, is fentanyl, very small amounts. If you go home tonight and have dinner and take your pepper shaker and just do one shake. That's it. And there's enough fentanyl on there to probably kill half the town council. Fentanyl is a drug that is very powerful in very, very small quantities. And we have actually, law enforcement have been given the notice of we suspect it's fentanyl, do not test it. Because it's so dangerous. And the problem is, is certain drugs are being laced with fentanyl and people don't know it. And, and that's the real danger. Fentanyl is becoming a huge problem. Huge problem. They may think they're taking heroin. They may think they're taking marijuana and it's laced with something else.
Chief, where is fentanyl coming out of?
I'm sure the DEA would love to know. But you know, there's, there was just something in Florida and Texas have had big seizures of fentanyl. But it's, it's, it's all over. It's not like, you know, it's coming up from the, from the south to the north. It's, it's coming in from everywhere. And you see different seizures occurring at different ports, different ports of entry. It's, it's just, it's all over.
And that, that is a compound that's bruised in a lab, I assume.
Yeah, fentanyl, yeah, I mean, it's, fentanyl is actually a derivative of something that's made legally. But it's, it's like, you know, it's manufactured and you know, people can make it, make it more, more lethal. And, and that's the problem with a lot of things. It's things that are good for you, you know? Like if you go have surgery and you need pain medication, that's fine. But when it's misused is when it becomes a problem. And heroin is an opioid and I'm sure we all had to take those when fed surgery or broken bone. And that's when people get addicted to it and then they go to something more powerful such as heroin. Unfortunately, Narcan is, is good if you get there in time, but if you don't get there in time, that's the problem. So. And a lot of times parents don't know. The last one we had that it wasn't even reported on here and it happened after I reported as town manager. The mother was, was shocked when she went in and found her son dead. She goes, I had no idea he was using any drugs. She goes, well, I knew he smoked marijuana once in a while. Well, he obviously graduated to something more harsher and that one time he used it was the last time we used it. So it's, it's unfortunate. We don't like to see that. And you know, anytime we get a chance when we deal with these individuals. You know, there's, there's actually laws in place now, not that we would do, there's laws in place that police officers cannot arrest somebody when they go to their house. If they call the police, dial nine one one and we go there and then they're in some type of medical distress because they're under influence of drugs and about ready to overdose. It's basically, everything in that house is off limits for us. The primary goal is treatment. Get them to the hospital to overcome whatever addictive action they're having. And that's what we, we try to take to heart. But unfortunately, we do, we do have our cases of Narcan usage. I actually thought it would go up with the pandemic, but it really didn't.
Thank you for the report.
I think we're going to do that once a month.
Yeah.
Yeah. David, I have a, one, one quick question about your report. And, and that has to do with the, the land use. I guess the village center plan that was submitted, I guess it had very, given the late hour, just a very brief question. When that work was done, was there any coordination to see whether or not anything that is going to be proposed or as part of that proposal that could otherwise be funded through the ARP?
Some of those items are included on the list that the committee is considering, yes.
Okay, okay, good.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint to the Water and Sewer Commission, Michael Coranda, Mark Pharmacy, and John Stelno. And then I would like to make a motion to appoint Christian A. James, Patricia Calgill, Clean Energy Task Force, Jan Alaya, Library Advisory Board, Jane Zrznitsky, Brownsfield, Darlene Raffinello, Conservation Lake, Cheryl Lobo.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Motion passed. Actually, one.
Mr. Chairman, I would read that in accordance with this information submitted by the tax revenue collector, we refund thirteen thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars for the seven sets of taxes.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion here. We are at the public Narcan portion. Please remember to use your H and feature. Please take your name and address and please remember, you have three minutes. Anyone out there, Cap? We have no one out there electronically. Do we have anyone in the office? In the, in the office. The audience? Hearing none. We'll close that portion of the meeting. We have a motion for adjournment. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Medians in German. Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Everybody take care.